From the pre-K all the way up through the high school seniors and on to the staff, and really getting health messages to the families, too. And we can't do what we do without the donations that are raised. And so I wanted to brag on some of those numbers also because Parkway has just been an unbelievably supportive school district, and I think you all need to know that. Let me start with last year because I always like to kind of do a report card of last year. In each one of the board members, I put kind of the summary of what the Parkway schools contributed, and it was just amazing. And in addition to the donations that are raised, you can take a look at the back of your mission sheet that I put in there because I think it's also important to know where do these monies go. And we're very fortunate in the St. Louis area, we have incredible research facilities here, and so most of the donations raised in this area stay in this area. And you can see some of the great research that's going on. Obviously, the treatment centers, too. I talk to people from outstate all the time that will come into BJC for a lot of their heart issues. The bottom line is we don't want to have to have those happen. So your donations are so important to really help fight heart disease before it becomes an issue. When you look at the totals, in addition to the donations raised, we also give a portion back to the schools in the form of PE equipment. So we can't do, again, we want to get these kids active, we want them eating healthy, we want them never ever to smoke, we really want to even teach grab a glass of water instead of a soda. Kind of happy to see all these bottles of water up here. That's always a better choice. And just teaching these things and getting more even PE equipment back to the schools, hopefully it's a win-win between our organization and the school district. But take a look at that bottom line. The donations that were raised last year just from Parkway schools were over $106,509. That is amazing. You guys should all give yourselves a huge round of applause for that. Should be very proud. And it was also, and Ron is a little competitive, but he's like, well, how much better is that than last year? That was over $30,000 more than the year before. So this is not an issue that is going away. Heart disease is not, but we are being able to combat it better with the support, the education, and the donations that you all have raised. And speaking of Ron, I want to brag on him because I don't think he gets enough credit. Pretty much, I see Ron about everywhere I go. I'm in and out of schools all day long. I run into Ron. I'm also involved with your High School Heroes program, which if you're not aware of that, it's one of the only districts that I'm aware of where your high schools, I think they're sophomores or juniors, they mentor the middle school kids about drug awareness, say no to tobacco. Now, the vaping that has come along, that's come out of nowhere. So Ron is very involved with that program. I always love to come and talk to those kids about some of the issues, again, related to health. And Family Fitness Day, Missouri Association of PE. So he is a superstar. You guys are very lucky to have him. And the fact that he is a great leader for all your other PE teachers. Some schools I see, there's some PE teachers that don't necessarily really walk the walk of health. Your PE teachers are really amazing people. So some of them will be really superstars and get recognized down at the Lake of the Ozarks. There's a Missouri PE conference that happens in November. A couple of your superstars are here tonight, so I'd like to recognize, have them stand. Amy Sidner from Ross Elementary and Randy Fant from was at Mason Ridge and now is over at McKelvey. Some of your other teachers, and I put the list in there, these guys are in the top, we're going to include you in, Amy. You are in the top 28 for all of Missouri schools for donations raised. Just amazing. And along with those two schools, also Belle Reeve, Barrett's. It's just amazing what these schools have done, and they're really inspirational to your students. A little bit, when we touched base this summer, and some of you are probably aware of that a new CPR bill in schools has been passed. It was signed in June. So when I met with Dr. Marty and Ron this summer, I made them aware of that this was happening. It would go into effect in the 2018 school year. So I've been touching base with all the school districts. Guess what? Good news. You all are already teaching CPR to your high school students. It's now required throughout the state. You all are already ahead of the game on that. So it should be definitely very commended. You are putting out there each year thousands of potential lifesavers because unfortunately, 80% of cardiac arrests happen outside of a medical institution. So that's what you want, is someone who's been trained. It's a very short training, hands only, and so the fact that Parkway is already doing that is just amazing. You guys should be very proud of that. A quick little thing of our meeting and looking ahead, there's been a challenge, a gauntlet thrown down that Dr. Knost, the superintendent at Rockwood Schools, has challenged Parkway District, Dr. Marty, and Fort Sumwalt District, Dr. DeBray. Dr. Knost is like, ah, because you all are the top three districts in all of Missouri. That includes everything, Kansas City, Columbia, everywhere. Dr. Knost is like, alright, who's going to be number one next year? And so whoever is number one, that superintendent will be taken to dinner by the other two, paid for. So Dr. Marty has kind of made it clear that he would prefer not to be paying for dinner for Dr.
Get the restaurant.
Choose the restaurant, all the above. And I think spouses are included. I might have to tag along. But it is just amazing that there's this kind of support for health and wellness because you all know, a healthier student learns much better, a physically active student and staff. Staff absenteeism is so much less when you have healthy staff. And that brings me to the next person, Leah Gonzalez. Your wellness coordinator for the district. Again, lots of districts don't have someone who's really in charge of staff wellness. Ron kind of takes care of student wellness, and Leah Gonzalez works with staff wellness. I'm really proud to say that Parkway, for the second year in a row, has been awarded the Gold Fit Friendly Workplace Award. And this means that your staff, they are being recognized for healthier habits. And that's kind of a tough thing, when they've been in the classroom all day. It's the last thing a lot of them want to think about is being physically fit and active, making healthier choices like water over soda. But Parkway has made a big effort towards that, and so you all are being recognized by the American Heart Association for that award. So I'm really pleased to see that, and thank you so much. We will have that with the plaque. But really, in the big picture of what I think you all should be most proud of, because in this job, I meet and hear hundreds of stories every year about, sometimes not such great news, about heart disease. In fact, I just got an email from a coworker tonight, when I was preparing for this. Her brother passed away, they did heart surgery, he passed away and did not make it and was not even 50 years old. Those are the stories we don't want to hear. But what I wanted to do tonight is just end with a really happy story because in my travels, as I said, I meet lots of people and lots of stories, but one of my favorite people that I met last year was a student I'm going to introduce you to. And she was at Green Trails, and this was one of the first years they had participated in jump rope for heart in a while. And she is very passionate about heart health. So I wanted to thank you for all you all do for the American Heart Association's mission, but I wanted to conclude with some really great news from Avery. So Avery, come on up here. She said she likes the microphone, so I think the buddy is superstar here. And so she would like to give you a little bit of her good news story.
Hi, my name is Avery. When I was four years old, I was diagnosed with a condition called heart block. Basically, this means that the electrical system in my heart doesn't work properly, causing it to beat slower than normal. The only cure was to get a pacemaker. I wanted to thank you so much for allowing Parkway schools to participate in the Jump Rope for Heart program. The money raised through this program will allow kids just like me to receive the care they need. Your support means a lot to me. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
And I would echo that also. Thank you so much. If you all have any questions from the board, I have my contact information, but I look forward to another wonderful, healthy year. So, thank you.
I just thought. As you know, Parkway has a lot of partners, and I really appreciate, and I know Ron does and others, the work that Julie does. She really is a great partner. And she challenges us. You know, she will tell us, as she did over the summer, that we can even do better than 106,000, and we're going to. And we continue to work on our staff wellness as well. I really appreciate her partnership, American Heart Association. And you, Julie, are to be commended for your work, and we're glad we can be of assistance and help, and help our staff and students realize the importance of your work.
Wonderful. It's all a partnership, so thank you again.
Thank you very much, Julie, and thank you, Amy, too, for that great feel-good story. We appreciate that. And now I'd like to turn the mic over to someone who I have a soft spot in my heart for her. She taught my grandson for two years, and it was an amazing experience for him. He still goes back to the middle school from time to time, and he's 20. So she made a big impression on him, and she's our principal at West Middle, Annie Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jacob, Board of Education, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Stover. I am honored to announce tonight that the West Middle sixth grade math team won third place in the National Math League Contest on June 11th. And that is the national contest, and that was held in Houston, Texas. To qualify for this national contest, the team had to win a state competition in May, and prior to that, qualify in November, and then again in March in regional competition. Anthony Wang, one of our team members, actually took second place overall in the entire competition. The contest and the content of the contest included probability, geometry, problem-solving, measurement ratios, solving equations and proportions, as well as computation, both mental and written. The questions were very much beyond the sixth grade expectations. The contest was a rigorous four rounds. Number sense, 10 minutes to compute mentally, possibly 80 questions. A sprint, which was 40 minutes to complete 30 multiple-choice questions. Another round called Target, four sets of two questions, completed in pairs in six minutes, and 10 questions to complete as a group. I don't know about you, but for me, that will be quite difficult. The team was under the direction of Mr. Joe Lee, the Mosaic's math teacher, and so I would like to congratulate this extraordinary team and like to recognize them, and I know you want to recognize them for their accomplishments. David Hines is one of the students, and Anthony Wang, they're not here this evening, but I do have Kayvon Rezai and Amug Mahamrab. So if you guys would come on up. So these young men met twice a week in the mornings, from 7:30 to 8:15 with Mr. Lee, and so obviously, they couldn't have done that without their parents. So I'd like to also thank their parents for all their hard work and support, too. I am honored to have them at my school, so thank you.
We're really grateful for these outstanding students, again, for their families, teachers, principals, for joining us tonight. Honored to have Julie with us, too, for the American Heart Association, and honored to have all of you with us. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. We've added the following. 6.01 addendum to consent item 1103, approval of personnel items. 6.02 addition of agenda item 11.27, approval of the March 2017 Teton Science School Contract. 6.03 addition of statement of work to agenda item 11.23, purchase of firewall from CDW-G. 6.04 modification to agenda item 11.09, approval of resolution to reset the 2016 tax rate levy. And 6.05 agenda item 11.10, approval of Fitbit contract tabled until a future meeting. And citizen statements. Before we begin the citizen statements tonight, I'd like to take a moment to comment as a follow-up to some of the citizen statements that were made at the August 3rd board meeting. We always respond to each person in writing and have done so, but it would appear that there is some confusion regarding the HR/SH curriculum that I would like to clarify publicly. On March 9th, the HR/SH frameworks were presented to the board for a vote. That vote, while not unanimous, was approved. At the August 3rd board meeting, some expressed concern that the school board was planning to revisit and possibly revote on the previously approved frameworks. I'm not sure where that rumor came from, but the March 9th vote stands, and the board is not considering a revote on that decision. I'm going to, I'd like to ask that there, I'd like to ask in this meeting that there not be any outbursts. I know, so if you would honor that. We do support revisions and modifications to the curriculum, and will continue to monitor the implementation now and throughout the school year. The goal is to ensure students develop healthy and safe relationships. Our curriculum developers, teachers, including certified health instructors, and the community have and continue to be involved. We encourage the community to provide feedback, especially as the parental website comes online and other materials become available. We have 14 individuals, or maybe it's 17, that would like to make.
Whatever.
It's a number of you that would like to make a comment tonight. We're limiting that to two minutes. And so if you will just state your name and where you live, it should match up with what we now do with a computer. But I'll start, let me just name a few names so that you can be ready to come up. Carrie Voels, first, followed by Pam Hill, then Ed Martin and Ronald Hoag.
Ready?
Yes.
Alright. I'm here today because I supported the curriculum, and I wanted to thank you all, for those of you who voted for, and for those who voted nay, for moving forward and for attempting to unify and just, there's so many more things that need to be happening in the district that need to be dealt with. So thank you for moving forward. The second thing I wanted to make sure was that, Ron, you and I don't know each other personally, although we've met a few times. My husband is a part of, or my husband, my son Alex is a part of the High School Heroes and had always spoken very highly of Ron. But I will tell you that as someone who was very much for this curriculum and in his ear, and saw how he handled those who opposed, who were in his other ear, whatever you're paying him, it's not enough. He handled himself with dignity, and he was respectful, and he was open-minded to everyone that came to him. He should be commended for this if you haven't already. And I'm sure that he's developed a skin as thick as a rhino by now, because we always haven't been kind in the way that we've approached him. We've been a little pushy on both ends of the spectrum, and so thank you for that, Ron. We appreciate that. And last but not least, I know Sid here is not here, but I'm going to assume as a board member, he's going to watch this at some point later or listen to the statements. And I feel like he has a unique opportunity that I hope he takes as the leader that he purported in his campaign to become a board member, that he was a leader and a unifier, and this is his opportunity to show that and help all of you move forward in implementing this kindly, respectfully, and considerately. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you very much. Pam?
Pam Hill, 500 Mercer Manor Drive. Well, I told everybody that I have to read from my sheet, but now that you've made the statement, it's gone, so I'm going to be extemporaneous. Thank you for continuing to support the curriculum. I'm the mother of two Parkway students, third graders and sixth graders. As far as I know, they are cisgender heterosexual boys. I'm a cisgender heterosexual woman. You do not need to be a member of a special interest group in order to support this curriculum. There are lots of us parents who are not directly connected to the LGBT community, besides knowing them as friends, who support this curriculum. And thank you for continuing to support it. Those who oppose, sometimes claim to speak for all parents, they don't. There are many parents who support this curriculum, and we thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed Martin, followed by Ronald Hoag and Roxanne Shapiro.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Terry, and board members. My name is Ed Martin, and I live in Parkway District. Also, I'm the president of Phyllis Schlafly's Eagle Forum. We work on these issues nationally, both on the curriculum question and also on some of the other issues that are bubbling forward. I step forward to make a statement today, in part to ask you, I think we've seen, and we're seeing, an incredibly important time in American public life. Parents are motivated, maybe agitated, in ways that we've never seen before. Social media is a great leaven, it also can sometimes be a great poison. We see all of that. But I want to challenge you on the issue of the March vote, and also with some of the questions around transgender and some of the things that we're hearing, and I don't claim to be experts, so I don't come offering facts, and rather ask for perhaps a consideration of some of the perspectives that I think we're seeing and will continue to see. And Eagle Forum has two experiences that I think would be helpful, and I'd like to offer to be in touch with Dr. Terry or anyone else to assist. One is on the transgender question. We've seen that President Obama's rule, there's a case that came out a few days ago that really impacts how that can be implemented and what is required. I think some of the desire of folks is to have more transparency on what the rules are on transgender and what's happening, whether the board's going to make that vote or the superintendent's going to make that vote. Turning to the issue that I think maybe is more on people's minds, there is really proven, we've done this in Florida, and I'd like to leave this with you, in Collier County, we developed a program that was a supplemental. It was not a replacement, it was for teachers to use, that was about health, and lowered the rate of birth rates in Collier County by 50%, lowered STDs dramatically. It became a conversation about health, became a conversation about what teachers could use that would work well for them, make choices that they could do. I think one of the great shames of this argument is that the only way for people that want to be out is to opt out. And sometimes opting out, or maybe that's not the only way, there may be other ways, but opting out is one way people feel a bit ostracized, and attention is on them for not being a part of it. So I just would like to implore you, I know there's a vote, you work very hard, I support how important it is to have volunteers, you know, citizens do this, but that vote in March and the subsequent election makes it seem like the people deserve and would like to see some more thought. And I would submit to you, some of these programs thrive, there's some, we do some in Florida, could be a model and a way for parents to feel like they're being connected to it and maybe a part of this. So mostly, I want to identify for you that these are very challenging issues, and we're not, they're not going to go away on one meeting, as you know.
Ed, thank you.
They're going to go forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ronald Hoag and Roxanne.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ronald Hoag. My wife, Flora, and I have lived in the Parkway School District since 1969. We've paid taxes into the Parkway District all of that time. We've had three children go through the Parkway system. We've been quite pleased with that system. We now have five grandchildren going through that system, and we're amazed at the changes you're proposing to make to move away from a basic, solid education and teaching comprehensive sex education. Dr. Marty, I want to know, why do you insist on using taxpayer dollars to push an illegal curriculum that the majority of parents do not want?
We don't answer, we're going to respond after your presentation. We don't respond at the board meeting.
You're not going to respond?
We don't, this forum isn't for responding.
Why are you willing to spend over $500,000 of our taxpayer money, money that I've put in, to push a social agenda that's medically inaccurate and with information that's scientifically refuted?
Again, we don't, we don't respond to this forum. That's what this forum is, is for you to make comments.
Since we have paid our taxes and you really belong to us, I think you should revote or re-sign.
And I would echo that also. Thank you so much. If you all have any questions from the board, I have my contact information, but I look forward to another wonderful, healthy year. So, thank you.
I just thought. As you know, Parkway has a lot of partners, and I really appreciate, and I know Ron does and others, the work that Julie does. She really is a great partner. And she challenges us. She, you know, she will tell us, as she did over the summer, that we can even do better than 106,000, and we're going to. And we continue to work on our staff wellness as well. I really appreciate her partnership, American Heart Association. And you, Julie, are to be commended for your work, and we're glad we can be of assistance and help, and help our staff and students realize the importance of your work.
Wonderful. It's all a partnership, so thank you again.
Thank you very much, Julie, and thank you, Amy, too, for that great feel-good story. We appreciate that. And now I'd like to turn the mic over to someone who I have a soft spot in my heart for her. She taught my grandson for two years, and it was an amazing experience for him. He still goes back to the middle school from time to time, and he's 20. So she made a big impression on him, and she's our principal at West Middle, Annie Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jacob, Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. I am honored to announce tonight that the West Middle sixth grade math team won third place in the National Math League Contest on June 11th. And that is the national contest, and that was held in Houston, Texas. To qualify for this national contest, the team had to win a state competition in May, and prior to that, qualify in November, and then again in March in regional competition. Anthony Wang, one of our team members, actually took second place overall in the entire competition. The contest and the content of the contest included probability, geometry, problem-solving, measurement ratios, solving equations and proportions, as well as computation, both mental and written. The questions were very much beyond the sixth grade expectations. The contest was a rigorous four rounds. Number sense, 10 minutes to compute mentally, possibly 80 questions. A sprint, which was 40 minutes to complete 30 multiple-choice questions. Another round called Target, four sets of two questions, completed in pairs in six minutes, and 10 questions to complete as a group. I don't know about you, but for me, that will be quite difficult. The team was under the direction of Mr. Joe Lee, the Mosaic's math teacher, and so I would like to congratulate this extraordinary team and like to recognize them, and I know you want to recognize them for their accomplishments. David Hines is one of the students, and Anthony Wang, they're not here this evening, but I do have Kayvon Rezai and Amug Mahamrab. So if you guys would come on up. So these young men met twice a week in the mornings, from 7:30 to 8:15 with Mr. Lee, and so obviously, they couldn't have done that without their parents. So I'd like to also thank their parents for all their hard work and support, too. I am honored to have them at my school, so thank you.
We're really grateful for these outstanding students, again, for their families, teachers, principals, for joining us tonight. Honored to have Julie with us, too, for the American Heart Association, and honored to have all of you with us. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. We've added the following. 6.01 addendum to consent item 1103, approval of personnel items. 6.02 addition of agenda item 11.27, approval of the March 2017 Teton Science School Contract. 6.03 addition of statement of work to agenda item 11.23, purchase of firewall from CDW-G. 6.04 modification to agenda item 11.09, approval of resolution to reset the 2016 tax rate levy. And 6.05 agenda item 11.10, approval of Fitbit contract tabled until a future meeting. And citizen statements. Before we begin the citizen statements tonight, I'd like to take a moment to comment as a follow-up to some of the citizen statements that were made at the August 3rd board meeting. We always respond to each person in writing and have done so, but it would appear that there is some confusion regarding the HR/SH curriculum that I would like to clarify publicly. On March 9th, the HR/SH frameworks were presented to the board for a vote. That vote, while not unanimous, was approved. At the August 3rd board meeting, some expressed concern that the school board was planning to revisit and possibly revote on the previously approved frameworks. I'm not sure where that rumor came from, but the March 9th vote stands, and the board is not considering a revote on that decision. I'm going to, I'd like to ask that there, I'd like to ask in this meeting that there not be any outbursts. I know, so if you would honor that. We do support revisions and modifications to the curriculum, and will continue to monitor the implementation now and throughout the school year. The goal is to ensure students develop healthy and safe relationships. Our curriculum developers, teachers, including certified health instructors, and the community have and continue to be involved. We encourage the community to provide feedback, especially as the parental website comes online and other materials become available. We have 14 individuals, or maybe it's 17, that would like to make.
17.
It's a number of you that would like to make a comment tonight. We're limiting that to two minutes. And so if you will just state your name and where you live, it should match up with what we now do with a computer. But I'll start, let me just name a few names so that you can be ready to come up. Carrie Voels, first, followed by Pam Hill, then Ed Martin and Ronald Hoag.
Ready?
Yes.
Alright. I'm here today because I supported the curriculum, and I wanted to thank you all, for those of you who voted for, and for those who voted nay, for moving forward and for attempting to unify and just, there's so many more things that need to be happening in the district that need to be dealt with. So thank you for moving forward. The second thing I wanted to make sure was that, Ron, you and I don't know each other personally, although we've met a few times. My husband is a part of, or my husband, my son Alex is a part of the High School Heroes and had always spoken very highly of Ron. But I will tell you that as someone who was very much for this curriculum and in his ear, and saw how he handled those who opposed, who were in his other ear, whatever you're paying him, it's not enough. He handled himself with dignity, and he was respectful, and he was open-minded to everyone that came to him. He should be commended for this if you haven't already. And I'm sure that he's developed a skin as thick as a rhino by now, because we always haven't been kind in the way that we've approached him. We've been a little pushy on both ends of the spectrum, and so thank you for that, Ron. We appreciate that. And last but not least, I know Sid here is not here, but I'm going to assume as a board member, he's going to watch this at some point later or listen to the statements. And I feel like he has a unique opportunity that I hope he takes as the leader that he purported in his campaign to become a board member, that he was a leader and a unifier, and this is his opportunity to show that and help all of you move forward in implementing this kindly, respectfully, and considerably. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you very much. Pam?
Pam Hill, 500 Mercer Manor Drive. Well, I told everybody that I have to read from my sheet, but now that you've made the statement, it's gone, so I'm going to be extemporaneous. Thank you for continuing to support the curriculum. I'm the mother of two Parkway students, third graders and sixth graders. As far as I know, they are cisgender heterosexual boys. I'm a cisgender heterosexual woman. You do not need to be a member of a special interest group in order to support this curriculum. There are lots of us parents who are not directly connected to the LGBT community, besides knowing them as friends, who support this curriculum.[1642.83]
I am fine with that, and I'm glad that there are adults with whom my child can build additional trust relations. This is my job as a parent, to help my children walk through a world where everything they hear, everything they encounter and are taught may not be with what we as parents agree.
Thank you, Roxanne.
But if I am doing my job correctly, I will help them walk through and I thank you for doing it as well.
Bill Newcomb, followed by Steve Johnson.
My name is Bill Newcomb. I wanted to address three issues. One is the health sex ed issue, the gender identity, and then the civility policy that was introduced last board meeting. In regards to the Health Sex Ed Program, I'm happy to see that you're interested in feedback and adjustments to the curriculum. From what I've studied, the curriculum includes a lot of misinformation. It's missing critical, life-altering information about sterility, wrong information about gender, ID separation from biological sex, not supported by science. The curriculum includes harmful information, things like 85% of teens transition out of anti-gender confusion. There's no urgency to push this curriculum forward, but that seems to be the position you're taking, so I hope you'll continue with the idea that you'll take revisions to the program. Yesterday, a federal judge blocked the Obama Administration guidelines that would force schools to allow biological males to use showers, locker rooms, restrooms, and vice versa. The order by a district judge in Texas applies not only to Texas but nationwide. Coming on the heels of Supreme Court temporarily preventing a similar policy going into effect in Virginia, this ruling is a rebuke of the Obama Administration's aggressive attempt to force its radical gender ideology on the nation's children. In regards to the civility policy, that looks to me like just a way of silencing people who disagree. I would like to know who determines what is civil and then who's going to be enforcing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Johnson.
Hello, members of the board. I wanted to come to you today as the father of two small children in the Parkway School District. Unfortunately, as a family man, I don't always have time available to attend every Board of Education meeting. However, I wanted to make a point of coming to this meeting to thank you for your leadership and supporting the updates to Parkway's sexual health curriculum. As has been discussed repeatedly, the updates are supported by scientific consensus, are realistic about adolescent sexual behavior, and in my opinion, age-appropriate. I understand that there are some in the community that are still not comfortable with the proposed updates. However, I believe that the opt-out option that you have made available is a good compromise for these situations. I just want to reiterate that for the sake of our community, it is critical that complete information regarding contraception and sexual health risk reduction, as it pertains to all orientations, be taught in our public schools. I urge the board to stay the course and continue to demonstrate the leadership you have established on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Bias, to be followed by Holly Even.
Suzanne Bias, 432 Browick Drive, Baldwin, Missouri. Dr. Marty, what medical panel, representing both comprehensive sex ed and sexual risk avoidance, has signed off on the medical accuracy of this curriculum?
Again, this forum is for you to make comments. We don't get engaged in a response, so it's for you, you can ask the questions, but I'm not going to respond.
No board member, member here responds, it's simply citizen statement.
Taxpayers are owed an answer to this question.
Well, we will respond, ask the questions.
I am entitled to an answer to my question.
And we will respond to you in writing.
This is medically inaccurate. This is indoctrination, not education. Suspend this dangerous curriculum.
Do you have anything further in your statement, Ms. Bias, that you would like to say?
We demand education, not indoctrination.
Okay, your two minutes are complete. Thank you. Holly Even.
My name is Holly Even. I live at 1617 Mason Valley Road in Town and Country. I'm a mother of five children, all of whom at some point have attended the Parkway School District. I currently have two children in high school and one in the elementary in the Parkway School District now. I'm a mother, I'm a volunteer for our schools, all of them. I'm a full-time career woman and very involved in various activities. My frustration is with the board and Dr. Marty with not answering and not presenting the information that we have repeatedly asked for over the past months. When people have met with you, we've asked questions, and we're getting a very political response that has nothing to do with what we are asking. As parents, we deserve the right to know what you're going to teach our children. When I sign my five children up for school in kindergarten, I sign them up under the impression that you're going to teach them how to become young adults prepared to go to college. I don't know if you guys have really educated yourself on some of the issues and facts that you consider medically accurate, but have you seen, Mr. Jacobs, the book that is proposed to teach our children, beginning at the third-grade level, that has photos of pornography? This is something that is not appropriate. I don't like to be viewed as someone from the opposition. I stand with the LGBT community. I love them, I support them, I have various family members and friends that I am very close with. This is not an us versus them. This is what's best for our children, to receive the education that they need to go to college. At this point, I don't believe that on our ACT tests or SAT tests, that this is something they're going to be testing our children over. I want to understand why we're starting a new program that's not going to prepare my child for college. I want to know why our test scores are going down, rather than continuing to increase and be competitive. Why are we not in the top three spots amongst other schools in our area?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
May I call on Deanna Toler?
My name is Dr. Deanna Toler. I'm a practicing chiropractic physician. I'm also a certified sexual education facilitator. This is the curriculum that I teach, and this is to seventh through ninth grade, and we're talking about a program for older individuals.
Excuse me, could you speak closer to the microphone? I'm happy to be here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. And I fully support this curriculum that is wanting, that the parents have voted to implement, and I applaud the board for passing this curriculum. For those of you who are dressed in white, who represent innocence, there is no innocence when it comes to sexuality education. What you are, you are afraid of what your children may learn, and you may want to yourself sit in on some of these classes so that you can also learn as well what your children are learning. There is a vast lack of education in yourselves. There's nothing illegal about this curriculum. There is nothing that is not fact or medically based in this curriculum. I teach parents and children who can't even say the words penis and vagina. Those are words that you have to learn how to say. So I support this curriculum. I support the inclusivity of it, the social justice aspect of it, and I hate to say it, but the times they are a-changing.
Hey, no more outbursts, okay? Because if there are any more outbursts, then we're going to, you're going to have to submit your comments in writing to the board. Amanda Heideman, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Amanda Heideman, 965 Burgundy Lane. I am a practicing board-certified family physician with two students in the district, one at West Middle and one at West High School, and I do want to also thank the board for your support of this curriculum over the last tumultuous months. By approving these changes, you've shown that you support our community and our students in providing the highest quality education that is based on the best available scientific and medical advice, and for that I am grateful. As a physician, I believe that implementing the approved curriculum is the best way to educate our students about the real, live risks of sexual activity that I see in my practice every day. Education is key to our students knowing the best way to protect themselves. As a mother and as a physician, my goal is to ensure our children are presented with information that best equips them for healthy and successful lives. I do respectfully ask that you remain committed to the curriculum as you are today, and I thank you for your consideration.
Jamie Walker, or Janie Walker.
My son is sophomore here at school. A lot of you feel like you know him, you write enough about him. When this whole thing was starting, and Andrew Haskins has been kind of the face of this, there were three things I told him, and he goes with this. You stand up for yourself because sometimes you have to, because no one else is going to, and sometimes you stand up for people that don't have their own voice yet. And change only happens when both parties truly respect the other and listen to the other. They're not going to change without that. And also, there is a line you do not cross. I don't care what you are supporting, there is a line you do not cross. It has been crossed. The intimidation tactics, the videos, the pictures, the writing online, this is my son. He is 16 and he is a minor. Where is a moral outrage here? Ask yourself that. What if this was your child? Parkway is not only an institution for learning, it is an institution to prepare our children to be citizens of the world, and when they go out there, they are not going to be in an environment where everyone believes the same. Thank you for turning around on me. That shows a lot of respect. As I said, we are trying to prepare our students to be citizens of the world. There's not going to be the same belief system out there. We have to learn to coexist. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Bennett, followed by Kate Wall.
First of all, that is called good parenting, right there. Second of all, I was going to come up and say, hey, what I've always said is, hey, please pass this curriculum and, you know, keep the curriculum, which you said you do, but I want to bring you to a scene at approximately 12 today. I checked my phone in between classing periods, and I got a notification from Facebook, from the group that is for parents for sex ed. And I saw that my face was plastered on a hate-filled website. And then I checked later that day, and lies upon lies upon lies were spewed about me. And talking about this meeting, I am shaking right now, and I have tried my best. I have shook your hands before meetings. I have come up after you said that I'd go to hell if I followed this curriculum. I came up and shook your hand. I said hi and said I respected you. You can shake your head all you want, but this district and this decision, they support us. Everyone on here, even the ones who voted no, one of the people who voted no on here came up and gave me a hug and said how great it was that Parkway students were standing up for what they believe in. And every time that you would go against me and my friends and take photos of us, you are just slamming everything that Parkway stands for. If you do not want Parkway, there are lots of other districts and private institutions that you may go to, but we stand for equality and we stand for each other. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Kate Wall. I'm sorry, is that? Sorry.
I'm Kate Wall. I wore white by total coincidence tonight. But with that said, I have a 13-year-old daughter, and a six-year-old daughter, and a five-year-old daughter, and I do pray for their continued innocence and purity. I did share a citizen statement at the board meeting where this was discussed and voted on, and my position then remains the same now. I'm not sure that any large group of caring and involved parents on both sides of this issue can stop what society is putting out there for our kids. What I asked for in the first meeting and what I continue to ask for now is complete transparency of what the plans are for how you plan to roll this out, and information for the students and the family. I would love a breakdown of grade, gender, timeline, when and how it will be rolled out, and whether or not teacher opinion can influence the message. It sounds like this is coming, and it's my hope that it fulfills the need to know more before we dive into this. I emailed you all, Board of Education, right after that meeting, that it was voted on and approved, and I asked for clarification how the transparency that we were assured would happen was going to be put out there for parents, including ideas from me on how to present it to parents, and I never received an email response, and that was very disappointing for me. I was hoping to get a response. I am a parent who's very open with my daughter, like I said, 13, six, and five, and just like before, I'm asking you to give me an opportunity to beat you to the punch of educating my children. I know other people have spoken about that tonight as well. I just don't know if my timeline of what I feel like my daughter should know is the same or matches yours, and I'm asking for respect as the parent of my daughters to give me the opportunity to know what you're going to teach and when you're going to teach it, so that if there's something that's going to be taught that I have some unsettled feelings about, I can tell them first. That's my job. I'm their mom, and they're my daughters. So I've emailed you about this. I received no response. It's my hope that that's not the policy as the Board of Education to not respond to us.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now Carolyn Johnson.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Carolyn Johnson, 639 Spring Meadows Drive. I am someone who works in public health and sexual health and HIV, and I'm also a parent of two Parkway students, and I want to express my ongoing gratitude and support for this board's vote for the sexual health curriculum updates. You are a part of the solution in reducing rates of teen pregnancies, STIs, HIV, and LGBT suicides. Thank you for your leadership and courage.
Thank you. Laura DeLuca, to be followed by Sue Weaver.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, President Jacob, members of the board, Mrs. Stover. My name is Laura DeLuca, at 634 Princeton Gate Drive in Chesterfield, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you on the Parkway Board of Education for your hard work regarding the implementation of Parkway's new health curriculum. I know this has not been an easy process for you, but I stand with the majority of parents who support these updates to the curriculum and look forward to seeing the board focusing on moving forward. You've all done an excellent job, and I'm so appreciative of the work you do to make Parkway a leader in education in Missouri. Again, thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mrs. Weaver, and she will be followed by Steve Fons.
Hello, my name's Sue Weaver. I live at 417 Kalamet Drive in Baldwin, 63011. And as a parent, I worry not only about what is being taught, but what's not being taught. Does this curriculum teach anywhere that pornography is harmful or addictive? One of the learning targets for eighth graders says, "I can use technology and social media as reputable sources of information and communication in order to protect my health." So back to pornography. We're talking about healthy relationships, right? I don't see a single lesson that teaches specifically that pornography is addictive, harmful, or bad. Nowhere in the new 2016-2017 overview and objectives does the word pornography even exist. So we're not teaching about that, but we're sending them to the web for information? If you do not know, Dr. Marty, if you do not know, members of the board, then you're either do not have the curriculum in your hands, or you do not know the essential information in the curriculum. Do the lesson plans or teacher resources include resources on the harmful effects of pornography? Do you know the curriculum is not ready? You know what is best for all kids. Isn't this the absolute goal? Is there anyone in the room, anyone up there, that can address this question? Does the curriculum address pornography?
Thank you. Mr. Fons.
Steve Fons, number five, Summer Hill Lane. Would like to share the fact that I moved to the school district 14 years ago, simply for the fact that Parkway School District is recognized as one of the top school districts in the state of Missouri, evident by the fact that we have a number of blue-ribbon schools, a lot of distinguished alumni from Parkway. However, with that said, I'm extremely disappointed that the school board has decided to go down the road of progressive politics dictated by a small handful of students, which I feel will be the downfall of our education system. dictated by a small handful of students, which I feel will be the downfall of our education system. That's my statement.
Thank you. Eight point oh, approval of agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for August 24th, 2016?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Resolutions, there are none. Communications, the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th, 2016, at seven PM at Central Middle School with an anticipated close session at six PM. Ten point oh two, board liaison reports. Are there any reports? Is that a tornado siren? Oh, it's a vacuum. Well, it's kind of a tornado. Are there any board liaisons that anybody would like to mention that they participated in since the last board meeting?
A few of us attended the PTO leadership meeting a few days ago. And basically, it's just incredible, the leadership of parents that we do have in this district and all schools. And that leadership is really interested in involving parents throughout the entire school. And that's what we need to do. We need to be sure that the parents do have their involvement in a lot of different aspects of the school. They help the school culture. Basically, they provide a lot of activities and events that really help the school culture and help children and help the faculty and help parents. So I want to applaud them and thank them very much for their leadership.
Thank you, Sam. Any other members of the board? Or I know you've got, Dr. Marty, you've got at least one.
Well, I don't think we could not mention tonight the tremendous, first of all, the activity of the HOPE chalkboard. I think a lot of people have seen that. Hopefully, if not, please take advantage of it. I don't know if Paul has a current number, but it was at five million. It's probably a lot more than that of people that, how many people now have been seen or have been part of the HOPE? Six million?
Seven.
Seven million, seven million. But today, it actually made the Washington Post. And so, and just a couple of days ago, Gary Marks, who spoke to us last year at Project Parkway, emailed me to let me know he saw it. So, I mean, it's getting some wonderful national exposure. We need to thank Paul's department, particularly Derek Duncan. Is Derek here tonight? Derek Duncan and Annie Dickerson, who really did a lot of work. Craig Maxwell, who, of course, the principal at Southwest. So it's just been a wonderful opportunity for us to start the school year doing a neat activity, but really inspiring others to also look at the HOPE. I was at a character education meeting today at EdPlus and they were going to try to duplicate that in some fashion in some of the work they're doing at EdPlus. They think it's a wonderful way to introduce folks to the school year, but also to opportunities.
That's great.
So again, thank you to Paul and his department for that work.
It was very heartwarming to see what the kids expressed and then the teachers do. And then at the PTO leadership, we did a mini one. I think he's issued a ten-second one. Is there anything else from the, any other reports from the board? Seems like I've been a dozen places, but I can't remember. I should write all this down.
And I should just, just if I could, we've had a wonderful start to the school year. I know that a lot of our administrators have been out and about. And I know Sam accompanied me on the second day or third day at school, out and about a little bit. But I just wanted to share, and I think other administrators experience that. I started my first morning at South High School with Dr. H. And the bell rang, kids are in the class. Five minutes after the bell rang, the halls were clear. And as Patrice and I started to visit classrooms, you would have thought we were well into the school year. There was discussion going on. There was, it wasn't just, you know, meet and greet. They were doing some wonderful activities that first period, the first day. And I would profess- And I would profess that takes a lot of planning, that those things don't just happen. So I want to salute our schools, our principals, our administrators, our teachers for being really prepared to get the school year off to a great start. I think it's a great sign that we're making, you know, use educational time right out of the chute. So, thank you, and thanks for the parents preparing children as well.
Thank you very much. Let me remind the board members, too, of some upcoming subcommittee meetings. There's the Project Steering Committee meeting, August 31st, at 8:30 AM at ISC. And the Student Services Subcommittee will meet September 13th at 3:30 PM, also at ISC. Now, looking at the consent items, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the August 24th, 2016 board materials?
So moved. Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed?
Yes. Mr. President, I would like to pull for discussion the addendum to 11.03, which is under the additions number 6.01, as well as for discussion, agenda item 11.04.
All right. Regarding the others, all in favor of all of those except 11.03 and 11.04? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's already been moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then those motions carry 5-0. So let's look at 11.03.
It's actually the addendum to 11.03.
Okay.
So it would be item 6, under the 6.01, addendum to 11.03, approval of personnel items, section titled "Extra Duty for Diversity in Action Leaders."
So I think, yes, come on up to the podium. Thank you, Charlotte. So you go ahead and ask her whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Jay. Just interested in getting an overview of what diversity in action is, who the leaders are that have attended this event, and give us some background, if you would, on the program and what the expenses amount to.
Okay. You're talking about diversity in action.
Correct. This is diversity in action first, the extra duty hours for the leaders in that program.
Okay. So diversity in action, first of all, I guess we have to go back and do a little history. It used to be Diversity, the Discipline and Diversity Review Committee, and that was formed out of an incident that happened in 2003 where a white student at one of our schools, fifth grader, teased and taunted an African-American student on the bus who was in third grade, third grade little girl. And out of that, and also called her the N-word, and so that it just blew up in terms of the parents, in terms of what they wanted done and what they were going to do. So what ended up happening, without going through all of the fanfare, is we met as two groups, their group and our group, together, and we formed a committee. From that committee, we came up with recommendations so that this would never happen again, and so that parents would have a way of actually being able to, if they had a problem, they would have a way to present it. And so we devised protocol, and we also devised all kinds of other methods, policies, non-discrimination, non-racial discrimination policies, and things of that sort. It changed to Diversity in Action after that, but it's the same committee. The one thing we do this time, though, is that we have an administrator from every building, and we have a teacher or counselor from every building. And we meet once a month. We also meet on level groups, and we also meet area. But once a month, we come together. The stipend, which is $1,350, is for the certified staff, and it's just like any other stipend. It is a stipend for, it's very, very small, and actually, if you broke it down in terms of how much they get paid an hour, it'd probably be cents. But at any rate, we wanted to give them something, so it's a sort of holding them accountable for doing the diversity in action part within their building, and then ensuring that students of color, African-American students specifically, are really, receive the kind of education that they should. They're put into advanced classes in the high school, middle school, they're put into challenge classes. And in elementary school, we have AAA, which is African-American achievement. Students who are working hard, but just need to be pushed a little harder, and maybe they don't qualify for gifted, but they still need to be exposed to rigorous curriculum. And so that's why we pay them the $1,350. That's per school. If they happen to have three people that are representatives there, they split it three ways.
So that's why some get $450 instead of $13.
Right, exactly.
And this is a program that occurs in other schools, not just Parkway, correct?
Yes. Rockwood has something similar, Wester Girls has something similar, but I can say that Parkway is way ahead in this area of social justice. And I would say that's all over the country. I've been to other school districts like Denver, Colorado, talking to their administration and the board, and they are nowhere near. And any place you go in the United States, they have not touched social justice the way we have in Parkway.
And you're seeing positive effects from this program?
Definitely. And you know, a lot of it is, when you're talking about positive effects, of course, when I look at the discipline of our African-American students, I used to serve on the Discipline Review Committee years ago, and that was a whole day and a half of seeing students, sadly to say, predominantly African-American students. And now, it's half of a day at the most. And also, our expulsion rate has gone down. So there, a lot of it, when you look at it, it may not be quantitative data that you're looking at, but qualitative data, our kids are doing, they're liking school, they're loving school, they're feeling like they're being cared for. And I just wanted to just, I thought about that, and I thought about this quote that Eric Luters gave this to me, but my husband had heard of this quote also, because it's an African proverb, and it says, "If you don't initiate your young men into the tribe, they will come back and burn down the village just to feel its warmth." And that simply means, not really, this is not literal, that they'll burn down the village. But when you look at kids who get into any kind of a discipline issue and things of that sort, it's because, for some reason, they are not feeling as if they belong. So we have to make sure every student is feeling as if they belong. And that's basically what we do with DIA. They're connected.
And it's extra duty because this time is being spent either before or after school with the students.
Right. Some schools do have meetings with students before school, some schools do it after school. So it's extra duty work. And even during planned periods, sometimes, teachers will take that time to call families and get them involved. It's working. It's really working.
I think if I understand right, too, Charlotte, way back several years ago, this was pretty expensive. We went off-site to hotels and the mills, and it was really quite expensive. And now you've brought it back home into the school, into the classroom.
Well, I think you're talking about the Social Justice Coharts.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. Diversity in Action is the committee, most of those people have gone through social justice, but you're absolutely right. It used to be extremely expensive. We had two-day overnight at the Doubletree Hotel, very nice, but very expensive. And we realized we didn't have that kind of money to spend, and so we had to put our heads together. Now, what we do is we do all-school Social Justice Coharts, and the facilitation is by me and my staff.
And that is related to agenda item 11.04 on our check register, where I saw some expenses for participant fees related to social justice. So those are, perhaps, it's a nice segue into that, to talk about the social justice, if there's no other questions about the...
Social justice is two days, two full days. It depends on the size of the school. This particular school, Parkway Central Middle and Highcroft Elementary School, went through the work this summer. And Parkway Central Middle, because of the number of, because everybody is involved. If you work in cafeteria, if you're a custodian, anyone who touches kids, they are involved in it. So that means, that's a lot of numbers. And so, a school this size would have to have at least four cohorts, and those are two-day cohorts. And the group of, the sad part of it is, is that Parkway, the one thing we have not accomplished yet is the hiring of diverse staff. To do this social justice work, you must have at least, ideally, 50% of the participants should be people of color. But we can get up to a third, not by Parkway, but by bringing other people in. And so what we did this summer is, we brought in college graduates who graduated from Parkway and now have graduated from college. We also brought in students who were in, that are now in college, that graduated from Parkway. And we pay them the same stipend as we do anyone else that goes, you know, during the summer, because it's done in the summertime. So teachers get their stipend as well, which is $300 for the two days, $150 per day. And so, the difference is, is that those teachers get theirs a different way. It's not, you know, written in terms of a check to them, because they're employees, so it comes on their check, on their paycheck. But that's the reason why we have to reach outside of the district, and believe you me, we can't get people to go through this too many times. Those who will, we beg them to do that, because it is very painful work, and especially for people of color.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the work that you're doing on that effort.
Thank you.
I hope you never retire, Charlotte.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I won't. Thank you very much.
All right. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the recommendations for employment, reemployment, certified and non-certified assignment changes, channel changes, extra duty, and leave of absence as listed for the August 24th, 2016 board meeting, consent item 11.03 and its addendum.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And for 11.04, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the checks and wire transfers for the weeks of August 5th, August 12th, August 19th, 2016, as presented in the August 24th, 2016 board meeting materials?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. 12.0, action items, 12.01, approval of comprehensive assessment plan for the years 2016-17. And look at the bounce in his step. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, President Jacob, and Vice President Sorrentino, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, members of the board. Thank you for the chance to present our comprehensive assessment plan. We do have a lot of stability within our assessment plan. We have very minor changes to this school year. I will highlight a few of them for you, but we do continue with our balance of locally-created assessments balanced against some external assessments to ensure that we're measuring student progress and making sure our students are growing and making the kinds of gains that we would like them to. In terms of changes compared to previous assessment plans, in elementary, you might notice end-of-unit assessments in mathematics. That's in relation to our new math resources. This year, we have added that as part of what we are doing in elementary, even though our teachers have been voluntarily doing end-of-unit assessments all along. We are making that more formal as we adopt the new math materials to just check on implementation, see how kids are making progress in using the new materials. In middle school, you might notice that we have articulated that there's high school placement testing. That is not a new practice, but we did want to make sure that we noted that we are checking to make sure, both at the end of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that students are making the kind of progress in math that we would hope that they're making, so that we can place them in the appropriate classes and potentially accelerate them if they are not placed appropriately. So we do have that placement testing that we've articulated. In high school, the only addition that you will see compared to previous plans is that the Practice ACT, which had been optional for schools to give in ninth grade last year, is now a commitment that we are doing in all schools this year as part of our plan. All schools actually opted to do it last year, all four comprehensive high schools, as well as Fern Ridge, but we are making it part of the district assessment plan. There were some concerns about the freshman ACT expressed last year at this time, particularly around the fact that it's not leveled for freshmen. We did produce reports for the freshmen who took it to give them feedback about their progress and say, "Here are your areas of strength." Even feedback like if they did not answer all the questions, things as specific as, "You did not answer all the questions," and that is a strategy that you need to take advantage of. And we also gave parents of freshman students a way to request their student scores, and we did have a lot of parents who, even though we did not directly send the scores to students, we did have several hundred parents of freshman students who requested to get those scores, so we set up a way for them to get those as well. So with that, and highlighting some of the additions this year, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? I guess not. I read the 17 pages with great earnest.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Don't go away, because we have another one for you.
Not going away.
May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved by consent that 2016-17 comprehensive assessment plan is written?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Nikki?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Dr. Sartino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries 5-0. And now, Kevin, you can talk to us about the approval to purchase the student assessment materials for the upcoming school year.
So you just approved them, and we must pay for them as well. So that includes our state assessments, as well as the NNAT, which we use with some of our youngest students to try to identify early on students who might need some additional either differentiation, primarily acceleration. Our gifted specialists in Mosaic program use that quite a bit, as far as an initial screening, though they do additional screening beyond that. And those are the two larger expenses in the assessment program.
So one of the things that we really try to hope that will happen is that the ACT scores will continue to improve. We congratulate you on what happened from last year to this year. That's a pretty significant improvement. Half a point is nothing to sneeze at.
Yes. 23.3 is our district composite this year, which is a celebration from 22.9. That's also the second time since we began giving the ACT to all juniors that we've achieved 23.3, so that is our high watermark, and the second time that we, our students have accomplished a score that high since we began that program.
So how do you help some of the, those that are in the achievement gap, so that, because obviously, if you could improve somebody's score from 16 to 20?
Yeah, that's quite a jump. In fact, we talked about in the annual achievement report last year, we do have about a third of our students who only take the ACT once. And amongst that group, the composite average in that group is about a 19, and that's been consistent over the last several years. That's part of where the Practice ACT has come in. We want students to have the opportunity to experience taking the ACT more than one time, but we also are looking at other opportunities to give our students a chance to open more doors, even if they might not be going to college. We want them to have the option, and we want those doors to be open, not closed, if they do decide to pursue that kind of track. So that's why we've begun the Practice ACT freshman year, Practice ACT sophomore year. We also, at Course Proposal a year ago, began looking at an ACT course during the school day, particularly targeting students who might be below the national average, and trying to, again, open those doors for them. We also had Central High implementing some innovative programs, like a Saturday ACT course, where we actually provided transportation for students who wanted to come and who maybe it didn't work in their schedule because of after-school activities, to attend the other sessions that we do offer after school for ACT preparation. So we're trying to take a real comprehensive view about how do we make sure that we get those students who, yeah, might be at a 16, a 17, an 18, maybe they're not sure what they want to do. Can we help them to increase their score so that they have greater opportunities and might have some doors open to them that might otherwise not be?
Well, I know there's several on the board here who tried to do that with their kids and saw some rather remarkable improvements.
Certainly.
And it certainly did a lot for how they felt about themselves, too, as they looked at opportunities out there.
There's certainly a lot of preparation students can do, but there also is no substitute for quality learning, and making sure that they really know the stuff, excuse me, so that they're fully prepared for that, and we want to do both, right? Because there are obviously strategies that are particular to standardized tests like that, and we don't want students to miss out on that. We also want to make sure that if they have a 16 or 17, there's probably more going on than just unique test-taking strategies. We need to help close some of those gaps in their learning as well.
Any other questions for Kevin, from any member of the board? All right, we're going to approve this, I think.
Hopefully.
A motion and a second, please, that the Board of Education approve ordering materials and scoring services for the following assessments. The Missouri Assessment Program, MAP, estimated at $30,000, and... The Missouri Assessment Program, MAP, estimated at $30,000, and the Nagalary Nonverbal Ability Test, N-N-A-T II, estimated at $22,000. And these funds would come from the 2016 Assessment Program budget.
So moved.
Seconds.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Dr. Ciaridino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Kevin. And 12.03, we don't get to hear from this gentleman as often as we'd like to, but approval of the Department of Energy Better Building Challenge. Eric Luters, our Director of Purchasing and Sustainability, followed by a handsome white-haired man.
You're so nice.
I've been following your work, too, and those papers. I've been at Henry and, and up at North to see the progress. Thank goodness we haven't had some rain. I'm sorry, Eric.
Good, very good. It's all contributing to exactly what we're about to talk about. So all the work, wonderful work that's been going on over the summer at North High, part of the reason I would have Mike come up here with me as well, to demonstrate that this is something that is a cooperative and collaborative process, that we want to further engage the district in. What that is, is it's the Better Buildings Challenge. So what the Better Buildings Challenge is, is it is a voluntary program with the Department of Energy that would commit, we would be committing to reducing our energy use by...
20%?
20% in 10 years, and I'm trying to see...
And we're doing that by not overusing batteries.
Right. Apparently. I don't work in technology, sorry. Yeah, so it, the program is to reduce, improve the district's overall energy efficiency of the district by 20% within 10 years. The district and Parkway and you all have been so supportive in the amount of work that we've already done, it's really incredible. That said, we see that there is continual improvement opportunities for us to reduce even more. And with this program, we would have the opportunity to identify a, within three years, a backdate of where a benchmark is that we want to go forth. And with the Better Buildings Challenge, we would be open ourselves to having national exposure, as well as national resources, to help us promote a lot of the activities that we're doing to further perpetuate our, our goals. But ultimately, we want to know, okay, why would we want to be, be interested in doing this? What is it that we're looking to achieve? We're looking to achieve definitely cost savings. So with energy utilities being one of the larger expenses of the district, it is something that we pride ourselves on, being very responsible of taxpayer dollars and stewards of those resources. So 20% savings in today's dollars, if we were just to straight-cut 20% off our energy bills, that'd be $962,000 savings right off the bat. And what could be done with that? That could be 13 average teachers, or 10,000 textbooks, 16,000 Chromebooks, et cetera. Over five years, that amounts to $4.8 million in savings. These savings are achievable. It may not happen overnight, but it is absolutely something that's achievable. Another wide to this element is the caveat that average utility rates is, in fact, increasing on average about 5% a year. There might be some years where there's 0%, other years where there's 8%, but averaging, it's about 5% a year. So with that in mind, that amounts to about $176,000 based off of our electric budget right now. So just by, by signing up to the Better Buildings Challenge, we're in essence hedging future expenses right from the get-go, and looking to go beyond that and continue to pursue our effort to have a greater cost reduction. But beyond that, we're looking at, at a really important element here, that the President of the United States has identified as no challenge poses a greater threat to future generations than climate change. 14 of the 15, the warmest years in records, has fallen in within the last 15 years. So what we're trying to do is look out for our kids, look out for our students, prepare them for the challenges of an ever-changing world. That ever-changing world is one with fewer resources, natural resources, and a warming climate. So we're excited about engaging them, the opportunity to identify how they can participate in this process as well. Where students learn matters, absolutely. Richardsonville, Kentucky, in Richardsonville Elementary School, they've demonstrated that this is possible. Granted, this is a new construction building, this is Richardsonville Elementary, it is a net-zero-energy building, which means they do not use any more energy throughout the course of a year than they generate on-site throughout that, that same year. So it is impressive. It's a new construction building, it's tougher to achieve with existing buildings that are a little older, but we are absolutely sure with some TLC and some dedicated collaborative efforts that we can get closer towards that goal, something that's similar to that vision that's been demonstrated in Richardsonville, Kentucky. We see this as an opportunity for students to further develop 21st-century learning skills with project-based learning, using the schools as a teaching tool, using our buildings, learning from the experiences that are, working directly with our planning department, with our maintenance crews, of, of how we can be better stewards within our buildings, and what types of problem-solving skills that they can develop. These are all pictures of Parkway students in their buildings, working to make their, their schools a better place, a greener place. Some involve students that are gardening at Green Trails Elementary, while not directly tied with energy, it's tied into stewardship. The other, the other two photos are, are students that are working to promote energy awareness campaigns within their buildings, that show some immediate results after those campaigns are launched. So there's a deep understanding that these students will have realized, and that global connectivity of what their actions do at that school and the impact that it has on their, their greater communities. And what we're, what we're excited about with using the Better Buildings Challenge for is a, a way to, to more formally articulate the goals of reducing and saving energy within the district as a, a launching pad to have a, a more systemic approach of to how we're approaching sustainability. We have done a, a multitude of groundbreaking, innovative projects in the district, and we are excited about that. What we're more excited is where we continue this and where it can go. And working with, not just making our physical place more, more energy-efficient and more healthy buildings, but also what this might be able to lead to with educational programming, and having students have that greater connection to place, as well as how that organization, organizational culture can also better achieve those results of greater cost reduction as, as relates to energy, and a greater overall sense of pride for those achievements. And ultimately, we're looking at is, is our mission. It's, it gets right to our mission, right to the core, in my opinion, that, you know, the mission, Parkway School District, to ensure all students are capable, curious, caring, caring about the environment, care about their, their resources, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world, that changing world of increased utility costs and diminishing resources. So with that, I will leave it up to you, if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions for Eric? I have one that might actually be for Mike. We had the, we got to go around the district and look at some of your projects, and we got down into the guts of West Middle.
Yep.
Way in the bottom down there, and I guess those were new air handlers?
They were new air handlers, yes.
How does that affect?
Well, they're, they're more efficient.
Energy consumption.
They're going to do a couple of things for us. Number one, they're more efficient from, from, from a cooling standpoint, but they're also going to move the air better, so it should help with, with, with indoor air quality, humidity control, those type of things, just because we're moving the air in a better, better manner, as well as, as better control over the system. So, and that's probably, what, 80%, 90% of the, that controls most of the building. I just want to say that, you know, I, the reason I'm here is because I believe in this also. Eric comes up with some great ideas, but he can't do it by himself. We can't do it by ourselves. I mean, we're, we're supporting a lot of the things he does, and we're turning the Amarin rebate, you know, just in LED lights alone. You know, I've got some of my custodial teammates up here, and they may not, may or may not recognize this, but they're not going to have to change the old fluorescent bulbs anymore for a long time, because we want LEDs, and they last longer. And, and they're saving us energy. But, but we're working together, and, and it's a we, you know, he's got a Y up there, but I, but I just wanted to say, really, it's a we. We're supporting Eric. I think it's going to, this is going to be good for the schools to get them re-energized in, in what they can do, is, is the we, to help get the energy program going, because Eric can't do it by himself, I sure can't do it by myself, my team can't do it by themselves, but I think collectively, as a Parkway, we, we can make great strides in this, and so I'm really excited about it, and then I think it's going to be a good thing for Parkway, and I think everybody's going to be surprised at how well we do.
Well, I would just say thank you, because there's so much out there on this issue right now, and to protect our resources this way, and for you to be on top of this, and to know that there's something there, out there like this, it will save us over, you know, $4 million over the next 10 years is just phenomenal. So thank you very much for looking at for our district that way and bringing this to us.
Pleasure, thanks for the support. See, I answered the question with West Middle, West Middle, about directly the, the energy savings, I think we are expecting estimates to save with West Middle about $10,000 a year in energy. North High Project, we're expecting to save about $30,000 a year in energy. Riverbend, about $5,000 to $6,000 a year in energy, and those are just, what, those four projects, so. So yeah, the, the, our community is supporting our efforts, you all are supporting our efforts with the leadership, and it's, it's, it's making an impact year over year. It's making a terrific impact.
Terry, could you, could you maybe just review for the board in public? We've been involved in an energy education program that you and I talked about after Ride, because I was familiar with it, and I was really proud that Parkway had, you know, already invested a lot of time. So it's really, the, the district really has a good culture, going back to about, what, 2004, '05 or something like that?
About 1991.
Or '91? Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So the, the energy management program, in its infancy, when it first got started, was about 1991 is when we did our first kind of benchmarking baseline to the district. And from there, it's grown, and it's evolved over time, and has made some pretty monumental strides over the years. And the, I'm, I'm going to probably misstate this number, I can get my info, but since that time, I think the amount of cost-avoided savings that we have realized has been the amount of something like $20 million since 1991, '92. So it's, it's, Parkway's been on the forefront of these efforts for, for decades now, and it's, it's made a huge impact.
And it's those little things, I mean, I have a little familiar with, I mean, it's, urinals flushing, it's, you know, it's freezer, I mean, really looking comprehensively, and when you have a big system like us, a lot of buildings, it can add up pretty quick.
Absolutely. So, so as a kind of a perspective, an average-sized home probably has, with all the different, like, you know, little cracks within the, the walls or the doors and around the windows, things like that, has maybe about a basketball-sized hole in its side that's just, you know, kind of cold or hot air ventilating all the time. So kind of magnify that with a district this large, some 3.3 million square feet, without the efforts that we've been taking to try to find those holes, so to speak, sometimes not literal, but also within efficiencies, within lighting and things like that, we're able to mitigate that and take a much more proactive approach across the district to, to look out for those small little things, because those little things add up with, with such a large district, absolutely.
Well, you guys are good stewards of the tax money that's given to us by the, by the public for, for maintenance and for the things that we need to do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve and sign the Department of Energy's Better Buildings Challenge, thereby voluntarily pledging to reduce energy consumption by 20 years, by 20% in 10 years?
So moved.
Set it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Dr. Ciaridino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our next one is 13.0, Policy Review. 13.01, the policy review is federal programs and projects. Does the board have any questions before I have Patty walk? Although she's got her Fitbit on, so she wants to get more steps, but... Any questions for her on this? This is actually one that affects us as a board, too, with our ethics policy, but... No questions? All right, then. Thank you, Patty. 16.0, call for a special meeting, September 1 at 5:00 p.m. at Parkway's Administrative Center. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special session on Thursday, September 1 at 5:00 p.m. at Parkway's Administrative Center?
So, so moved, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Our next scheduled closed session is anticipated that it will be held on Wednesday, September 14, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. at Central Middle School.